Call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, September twenty one, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay.
Sorry, I need to be assigned as an interpreter.
We have interpreters in the back room, so anyone that needs an interpreter should go back there and meet with them.
We should probably say that in Spanish, Jen.
Can you say that in Spanish? Thank you. Melissa, can we have the roll call?
Yes, Chair Clow.
Yes, present.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Here.
Commissioner Lucero. Commissioner Morondo. Commissioner Reland.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucero is excused. And Maggie, do you want to announce? And Commissioner Morondo just walked in.
Oh, thank you. I will mark him as present.
Thank you. Maggie, do you want to explain, if there's anyone on Zoom, how to access the Spanish channel?
Yes, thank you, Chair Clow. The Spanish interpreters raised their hand on Zoom, so I want to maybe let them do that.
Okay.
Okay, Alice, here we go. Is it Kelly on Zoom?
Yes, yes, I need to be assigned as an interpreter after I make this announcement also, otherwise we can't interpret. And there's no globe for them to select, so.
Okay, um, yeah, if there's, so please, yeah, say what you.
Si alguien quiere escuchar la presentación en español, en un momento va a estar un globo, un terrano, terrano que está abajo en la pantalla que puede seleccionar y seleccionar español para escuchar en español. No está ahí todavía porque no está nombrado como interprete todavía.
A real set. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Smith, can you leave that?
I pledge allegiance to the United States. This is your republic for which it stands. The nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. Staff, have any changes to the agenda?
Chair Clow, no changes to the agenda for tonight.
Commissioners, have any changes? If not.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Vice Chair Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Reland.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you. Staff communications.
Chair Clow, thanks. I think we just want to get right into the the presentation on the Land Development Code Update Assessment Report. I think we're going to hear from staff, Daniel Alvarado, senior planner first, and then our consultants from Clarion. Matt and Jenny will give a presentation.
How about now? That sounds better. Chair Clow, members of the commission. Thank you all for meeting on a second meeting of the month for this special presentation of the assessment report for the Land Development Code Update. I think you all are all familiar with this project, but I know TJ hasn't been here since the conception, so I'll briefly go back and talk about it. So as you know, we've we're updating our land development code and we are in the midst of phase one of that update, which is the non-substantive changes to the code, as well as assessing the code and determining what changes need to be made throughout all phases. The the project team is going to go more deeper into that in a sec, but as you know, we started the project in in February of two thousand and twenty-three this year. Had a bunch of open houses back in the spring where we started our engagement period. And now this report is really the culmination of all of that engagement and research and analysis that we've done over the last, well, year now, including some staff work before we hired Clarion, that will now show kind of the path forward for for the project. So we're really excited to have Clarion here in person, from down from Denver, and I'll go ahead and pass it off to Matt, and also we have Jenny from Clarion. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel, Commission. It's good to see you. Thanks. Thank you for the opportunity to present. We have a slideshow that I think we're going to present. It's coming up soon. There it is. So the presentation tonight is going to be on an important first milestone in the update of chapter fourteen, the Land Development Code. It's going to focus on the assessment report, and we're going to do a couple of things in this presentation. First of all, I'm going to walk you through the overall project structure, just to to remind you kind of where we got here. A little bit more detail than Daniel gave about the the process of how we're going to rewrite the code in the different phases. And then Jenny's going to come up and give you some some substantive introduction to the assessment report and tell you about some of the key themes that we've identified. So with that slide, please. This is just our 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 agenda. We're going to remind you a little bit about the project team, who we are, why update the development regulations. We'll talk about how the the process for updating the regulations, the overview of the assessment that Jenny will give you is the bulk of this meeting. And then we'll have time for Q and A and discussion. The the project team, you can see there, Daniel's going to be the overall kind of day-to-day project manager, working under the direction of Jason, department director and colleagues Heather and Maggie, Clarion Associates. We will be the principal drafters working with your staff. We are a planning and land use consulting firm based in Denver. We've done zoning code updates across New Mexico, across the country. We have worked in Santa Fe before. We had a chance to work on the chapter fourteen revisions probably twenty years ago. That was one of an early projects that I worked on. So we're excited to be back and to have a chance to help take it to the next level. Slide. A little bit about the project. Next slide. What is the LDC? We don't need to spend too much time on this with you all, but this is the presentation that we gave at the public open house last night. And it's really important for the public to start to explain what a zoning code is and what all the different pieces are, and how it contains not just the zoning districts, but all the regulations that apply to land uses and the standards that affect building design and parking and landscaping. And so we've really tried to give people a sense of the breadth of the project and just the variety of issues that are covered. And I think that starts to explain why we have an extended timeline for projects like this, because there's just a lot of stuff to get people's input on. Slide. The project goal is 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 listed on the slide. This is based on language that the city crafted in the RFP for the process. When they said that they wanted to create a new land development code that that focused on all these issues on the slide. A consistent, user-friendly set of regulations that are easy to understand and simple to administer. Lot of different examples of how the current chapter fourteen does not meet that goal. So we have a lot of room for improvement there. Best contemporary planning and land use practices, clear guidance, so the development reflects community goals for future growth. Those, that's starting to get into some big questions about what the community goals are. And so that really leads into this final bullet, implementing the new Santa Fe general plan. We have a multi-phase project, and we're going to start off pretty simply with the cleanup stuff. But as we get farther along into this effort down the road, we'll be getting into bigger ideas that will coincide with the new general plan update, which you're, which is just getting underway. Slide. So it's going to be a multi-phase project. This is just the, this is just the land development code process on this slide here. And it's divided into three phases. And phase one, where we are now, is what we're calling the foundations phase. This is primarily going to be non-substantive updates, not entirely, but primarily non-substantive updates. We kicked it off in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. We talked with a lot of folks, talked with several of you all, we talked with a lot of folks in the public. We had online surveys that we got hundreds of responses to, talked with a lot of staff, not just planning, but other departments as well, to get feedback about how the code could be improved and where the opportunities were. Where we are now is this, the the middle box, the analysis and annotated outline, where we synthesize all the feedback that we heard, and we start to put our recommendations forward about how chapter fourteen can be improved. We're going to get feedback on this over the next couple of months. Then we'll actually start drafting the 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 first real regulatory document, the LDC foundations draft. This is going to be a rewrite of chapter fourteen that's primarily non-substantive. There might be some substance that we'll we'll talk about that, but primarily non-substantive to clean up what you have now. That will be intended to be an adopted document. So sometime middle of next year, we will be bringing forward an adoption draft of this of this new chapter fourteen to repeal and replace the current chapter fourteen with a much more user-friendly document. It will be a foundation for these next two phases. Phase two is the substance. That's where we start to get into more significant questions about, do you require parking for all development in Santa Fe? What are some of the revisions to the park, to the landscaping standards, the building design standards? Maybe some more significant revisions to the historic standards. We're going to give you a lot of examples of those types of changes throughout this presentation, but that's all in phase two. That's after we get through phase one adoption. And then finally, at this point in two thousand and twenty-six, the general plan process will have been underway for a while. That phase three is intended to focus on really linking the the general plan with the land development code. We'll circle back and make additional revisions based on that general plan progress. And that's probably going to get more into substantive updates to the zoning districts. So that's the overall scoping of the project. The general plan, as you know, it's 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 getting started now. It's intended to go all the way throughout this effort as a separate phase. I guess that's it on this slide. It's a lot of moving parts, but it 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 makes sense. It's hard to do projects like this. It's hard to get momentum for big changes, for ordinance updates in in communities that are active actively involved like Santa Fe. And so this is a great effort to to really break it down in a manageable way. Just a few examples of what I mean by phase one versus phase two. Phase one is a lot of things about user friendliness, better illustrations, reconciling inconsistencies, improving internal cross-references throughout the LDC, but also external cross-references to other related regulations. There's a lot of opportunities there. We've been talking with folks about areas where they find the code complex or difficult to use. Got a lot of examples of things to do here. Phase two. Next slide. Phase two and three is is going to get into the hard stuff, and I, all the different topics are listed here. Really, the balance of this presentation is going to start to walk you through all these different topics and where we get more substantives here. So let's go to the next slide. Just a little bit more about the overall project process. Public engagement is going to be crucial through all parts of this rewrite. We have the project website set up. You've all seen that, I think. That's going to be our clearinghouse for all the different information about the calendar and where we post materials. That's where the assessment report was posted earlier this week. That's where we're going to have the opportunities to comment on the document. Next slide. We are committed to ensuring that public input is is a is a key component of this process all along the way. We know that there's a lot of different stakeholders, a lot of different groups to try to reach out to for projects like this, and the website's going to be one of our key tools. We'll we'll do that throughout the project. Whenever there's there's new documents to to review, we'll, we we call those project milestones, and we'll we'll be reaching out to different folks throughout the the project. Next slide. Beyond the website, we're going to be doing public meetings. We had a great meeting at the South Side Library last night. Every time we come out, we're going to try to do meetings in different locations to reach different parts of the community, but also open houses, presentations, etc. Might use Nextdoor, might use other social media tools as well. Next slide. This is an important kind of component of our outreach strategy. The city has identified and put together two different working groups to help us with this work. It's hard to get just generally people interested in zoning in a lot of communities. And so there there are some folks that have that have knowledge, detailed knowledge, and they've stepped up to say, yeah, we're willing to give you our time on an ongoing basis to help advise the project. The technical working group, we met with them today, really good group that has a lot of detailed experiences, maybe as attorneys or as contractors or as builders or as representatives of of conservation organizations, people who really have looked at chapter fourteen in more detail than most people in the public. They're really going to help us out with this phase one and help us out with the nuts and bolts of cleaning up some of the language, the inconsistencies. They've got really good ideas about how some of the the stuff in the weeds can really be improved. And then on the right, the citizen advisory working group. They've got really good experience with land use generally in Santa Fe. Maybe not the detailed experience with with the the document itself that the technical group does, but they've got really good just ideas about land use issues. And they're going to start to help us think through some of the the more policy issues that are going to come up in phase two and phase three. And they're going to be meeting on an ongoing basis to help us with that. They're going to meet on a on a monthly basis. They're probably going to want to grow that group a little bit. We had a good conversation yesterday about representation and making sure that we have all different voices in the community on that group. And so there's going to be some suggestions to add members to that group moving forward. For both of these groups, we're going to put the names of the people and the represent, the organizations that they represent. We're going to put those up on the website so people know who they are. There's a lot of questions about who are who's on these working groups, and we want to be as transparent as possible with them moving forward. That's our last slide on project process. Now I'm going to turn it over to Jenny, and we're going to move into a more discussion about the code assessment. So thanks, and I guess we'll take questions on the process at the end with all questions.
Thanks. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jenny Baker. I'm with Clarion Associates. We will go through now and talk about the different sections of the code and dividing up into mostly phase one and phase two and three, what those changes, the proposed changes are at this time. So okay. So if you've seen the assessment, it's published on the website. You can get to it there. It's a project overview like we've been talking about, and then it goes through several key areas for improving the code. And that's what we're going to go through here tonight. There is also a proposed annotated outline for how it will be reorganized, and that is at the end. And there will be, we haven't posted this yet, but we have created a separate detailed table. And what that includes is a read of the code section by section and comments, questions, suggestions for how to deal with that when we get to that point in the drafting. So that also will be on the website, but we haven't gotten it up there yet, still under review for some of the aspects of it. It'll be available soon. Okay, so to start with, we heard from people about a couple of themes that don't really fit neatly into one section of the code. And those are equity and sustainability. So I'll talk about those two things first. Equity is a big word. It means a lot of things to a lot of people. I think that, you know, it isn't equality, but it it tries to fix the outcomes rather than providing an equal opportunity to everyone from the start. One of the things that we will focus on in thinking about equity during this rewrite is affordability. They're not synonymous, but they're certainly related, and I don't think that you get one without the other. We definitely understand that Santa Fe, like many other communities, has issues with decreasing affordability, gentrification, displacement. And so when we are rewriting this, all of the things that we do, we will keep that in mind to make sure we are not exacerbating exacerbating a problem, rather we're trying to fix it and make it less pronounced in this community. Part of that is representation and inclusivity. As mentioned, we will try to reach as many members of the community throughout this process as we can so that their voices are reflected in the changes that we make. Sustainability is another thing that doesn't fit in one single section of the code, but is very important to most communities at this point, trying to adapt to changes in climate and just make regulations for development more reflective of green building. There are various ways that you can approach sustainability in a code. What you, it's tough to see on the top there, but that is a small sample of one way that we have approached this in a different community, and it is to put together a list of options. So development has to meet a certain number of options, can do renewable energy, can do can landscaping that focuses on water conservation, reduced parking, permeable parking. There are pages and pages of things that can go into that, so the community can have some choices, some options that allow development to focus on greater sustainability. As we go forward, we'll think about whether that is one section of the code or whether it is incorporated into various different sections in various ways. Next one, please. The first, this first part talks about just reorganization, making the document more clear, reformatting it. And so we'll talk about some of the ways that we'll do that. Looking at this slide, what you're seeing on the left are two pages from the current code. It's text-heavy. There's not a lot that distinguishes any of that text. And it's very legalistic when you get into the actual like reading of it and the way that it's phrased. So one thing that we will focus on to make it easier and more accessible to people is to just improve the page layout. You can see that on the right. That's a sample of a zoning district from another community. But it gives illustrations, it gives tables, and just tries to to give different ways for people to understand information instead of just a lot of text on a page. Part of making things more accessible is to add graphics. We showed you that on the previous page. Here are some more examples. A lot of people prefer looking at things visually rather than reading a block of text. And so we try in our codes to make sure that there are ample numbers of illustrations to help people with that, to to grasp things in different ways. These are just a few examples of the way that we use them, using them to illustrate signs concepts. How big going to be? How do you measure it? What kind of sign are we talking about is one way that we like to rely on them. On the bottom there, on the right, that is how open space can be structured. And there are any number of ways that you will see as we go forward, that we will try to incorporate graphics and illustrations to make concepts easier to grasp. All of these things that we're talking about here are a central focus of this this phase one, where we're just going to be trying to reorganize, eliminate inconsistencies, and make things easier to to get through when you're using the code. This is an example of how the the organization will be structured. It's not too different from from the way it is now, but it just will be a little more streamlined. And one thing that we think will be important is to take information related to a certain topic and put it all in one place, because in many instances, it's scattered in different sections in the current code, which makes it harder to use. Next one, please. Let's take a look at the zoning districts and what we're proposing for that. This is the map, the current map of Santa Fe's zoning districts. You are probably all familiar with that, so I won't spend too much time on it. Next one, please. And then here are the tables that represent those same different colors on the previous map. For phase one, what we propose to do with the districts is something similar to what we showed on that prior slide, where each district will have a page that sort of summarizes what kind of development is appropriate there. So an illustration that shows what that is, and then pulling the standards that are associated with that district together, making sure that the purpose statement is clear. All of those things will be part of phase one. We will also take a look at the standards that go along, like the lot standards and things that go along with that. Next one, please. Phases two and three can, as we've talked about before, have more substantial changes. And so what that might entail is taking a look at all of those districts and trying to figure out, is there any anything that's missing? Is there a kind of development, mixed use is one example, that the city would like to see where the district you have maybe isn't working to produce it? So maybe some new ones are needed, and that's what the illustrations on the right are showing, are different kinds of mixed-use districts that different communities have used. We don't necessarily mean these to be what will happen here, but they're just representative of what can be done for different intensities of mixed use. So maybe adapting the current districts, adding new ones if anything is missing. There may be some opportunities for consolidation. Some of the residential districts have a lot of similarities. So maybe they can be condensed and make that list a little bit shorter and more manageable. The standards that accompany them, density is the way that the residential districts are structured now, and we can look at other concepts. A lot of places choose to use lot size rather than density, and there's some more flexibility in that. But we can talk with the community about what approach would be best for those. Overlay districts, these are really important here, obviously, because your historic districts are part of that, and there are a number of other overlays. So phase one is just trying to get them organized, make sure that there isn't any contradictory information, putting the information that's related to a certain overlay in one place. I think the archaeological district is one instance where the majority of the substance for that district is in the procedures instead of in the overlay. So we'll just reorganize things like that, clarify vague language, primary facade. There are a number of other definitions that can be added to make sure that those things are clear. And then as we go forward into phases two and three, historic was a big topic that we heard a lot about. So I think there's a lot of improvement that can be made there just from the restructuring. But getting into the substance, it can look at, are some of those districts so similar that they could be combined? Should some of them be separated, like the the downtown part and the north's north side and east side? There's a lot of overlap in those, and so we'll take a look at clarifying that, making sure that the historic sign regulations are clear. We have understood that that's not really working very well for the city right now. Archaeological review districts, we will work to clarify the boundaries. And we have also heard that there should be a review of the process, because right now it's it's focused on the process rather than the actual attempt to preserve resources. So those are a couple of things that will go into the overlay district updates. All right, land uses and use-specific standards. This shows the current table on the left, so this is part of the city's code. And then on the right is a sample. The way that the uses are structured right now is actually pretty good. It's pretty accessible. It's divided into categories with specific uses. But we think that it can be a little more user-friendly with some reorganization that you can see over on the right. That is a table, a working table. So as we go forward in this process, you'll see something like this where it is color-coded, so you can see the, on the left column, those are specific uses where it's highlighted in the, I guess, reddish color, pinkish color. Those are new, and then the other colors in there indicate changes in permissions, but we'll go through all of that as we get to that part. It's just an example of how a use table can be structured. We will also take a look at modernizing the use regulations. One thing that has been suggested is to change the special use permit to be called conditional use, which may just seem like a name change, but it indicates more than that, because the special use permit isn't really a permit. It's a review to see if a use can be appropriately accommodated in a specific, a specific location. And so changing it to conditional use emphasizes that there may be conditions to allow impacts to be mitigated if a use is approved somewhere. We'll also take a look at the use-specific standards that accompany all of the uses. Basically, things that say, if you're going to do this here, you have to comply with certain standards. They can cover a lot of things. They can cover hours of operation, how close, if something is close to residential, does it need buffering and that sort of stuff? So we'll take a look at those and maybe add some new uses that have come up recently. There are a number of things that you have seen in the community that we will try to get added to that table so that it's complete. Second part of modernizing the regulations will be taking a look at where uses are allowed and by what process. So that's the conditional use, or maybe something isn't allowed somewhere. So we'll review all of the uses for that. Revisit some of the use-specific standards that you have now that we have heard can be improved in some ways. Accessory dwelling units came up a lot, the need to make sure your telecom regulations comply with federal law. You can take a look at adding new standards, and those can help sometimes with certain uses can be allowed in places if they have the proper standards, and they don't necessarily need to go to a public hearing. Last thing here is to make sure that we add different residential building types so that it can promote housing diversity, which can help over the long term with affordability. All right, design and development quality standards, this covers just a lot of information that's very important here, so we'll go through some of them. First phase is focusing on same kind of issues, cleanup clarity, and these are some of the areas that are included in those. And these are some of the areas that are included in those development and design standards. So parking, landscaping, screening, buffering, building design, signs, et cetera. In a lot of cases, like parking, the the parking table is an appendix to the code. It's not even in there in the same place as the other standards. Once again, putting things together, making sure there are no contradictions or inconsistencies, and making sure that things are clear and accessible. Phase two for this. Phase two gets into bigger conversations. Vehicle parking, does the city, does the community want to consider not having minimum parking standards anymore? Many places are eliminating them and just deciding that the market is doing a decent job providing what's necessary. So that's something that you can think about here and also maximum standards. If you choose to keep standards as a requirement instead of minimums, many places are considering maximums. You can't provide more than whatever number. We will also look at flexibility, so different ways where you may be able to reduce parking requirements in defined circumstances. If you won't need as much parking as might be required. And also including EV parking standards and maybe expanding the bike parking. In thinking about landscaping, there are a couple of areas of focus that we have identified so far. One of them is to strengthen preservation of existing landscaping. So in a community like this, it takes a while for some plants to grow. And so keeping them when new development happens in many cases can be preferable. Because you're getting greater environmental benefits from grown mature landscaping than you are from the replacement. So that's one area of focus, and certainly water conservation is another. Maybe considering prohibition of turf, grass and other high water use plants. In looking at screening and buffering walls and fences. Much of much of those, many of the issues that come up with those have to deal with transitional areas. Where some use is next to a residential use or zone, and so you want to make sure you have standards to add some protection there. Next one. Building design is obviously centrally important to Santa Fe. So we have heard a good bit about the architectural point system and some improvements that could be included for that. Simple things like defining what colors are okay and what is an earth tone, like what is? What is a bright color that you don't want to see? And then obviously bigger things than that, like whether the the point system is producing the kind of development that it's intended to, or if it can be improved. Later, in the later phases, we can consider whether form based tools can be used maybe in addition to or instead of the architectural point system. That's a big, a big conversation that I think will involve a lot of the community. Signs, taking a look at making sure there's no content based regulation in the signs. And then just updating to include new sign types and standards for historic signs. All right, we're getting to the end. Thanks for sticking with us. I'm going to hand this back to Matt and he will take you through the end of the presentation. Appreciate your time.
Thanks Jenny. Yeah, just one more big topic and then we're almost done. The procedures in the code, how do you make decisions about development applications? Next slide. Phase one, this is a screenshot of a table from the current chapter 14 that shows all the different types of applications. Development plans, special use permits, et cetera. The focus here in phase one is going to take a pretty light touch. To try to clean these up, to make sure they're 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 drafted to reflect actual practice. To make sure that we we address any obvious inconsistencies in the code. We don't want to go too aggressive in phase one. However, with phase two, next slide. We have an opportunity to be more thoughtful about how the systems for for considering development in Santa Fe are really more efficient and I really reflect that, you know, the community's values in decision making. We can relook at all the approval criteria for different decisions. We can look at the procedures themselves, the different levels of detail that are required for different stages in the process. How much are you requiring for development plans for different development plans of different types? We've heard from a lot of stakeholders, for example, that Santa Fe requires a lot of detail early in the process that can make it very expensive. Especially for small projects to, you know, even consider getting through the process. And that can be especially challenging for infill redevelopment projects, so we can relook at that. The E N N process, early neighborhood notification, how is the public brought in, especially to larger projects? Is that being done in an effective way? We have an opportunity to rethink some of those big conversations there. Allow the city council to focus on the big picture issues and delegate simpler projects to boards or commissions, subject to clear standards in the code. Whenever we do a code update project around the country, this is an important thing that we look at. This idea of making sure that the council and the and and the the big decisions are handled by the legislature, the governing body. But the 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 smaller decisions can be handled at the more efficient lower levels. So that's it. Maggie's anxious for me to move on. Next steps, that that's our overview of the substance of the code. We've been asking all the groups that we've met with so far to get their comments on the assessment report by November fifteenth. That gives a good six weeks after the document was posted online. And so that that should give time for folks to 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 get in there and really take a thoughtful look. The website is going to be the tool to to submit those those comments. Next slide. We have, we're going to be using a tool called Conveo. It's just a software program. And it's it allows basically us to put a PDF PDF up online and people can comment directly on on that document. They can comment on big issues or small. And you could see other people's comments as well. And so the public's going to be able to go in there and see other people's comments. And you can actually put up a check mark, I I agree with this or disagree with this. But it will be a publicly accessible document that everyone can can see. We're going to have three versions of this, actually. We're going to have an internal working document for each of the committees. So that'll be one for the technical group and one for the citizens advisory group. And then we'll have one open to the general public as well. So we'll be able to collect comments in all three of those ways. Again, by November fifteenth, we will use all that feedback to inform the drafting of the code. And you'll you'll see us back here in the next few months with the first installment of the new draft, chapter fourteen. So that's a lot of information, both about process and about the substance of the assessment report. So with that, we look forward to y'all's questions and discussion.
Questions by the commissioners? Commissioner Reeland?
In your guys' experience with implementing these new standards and such, do you see an improvement in the efficiency of the land use codes?
Very much so. Yeah, we especially, you know, from the process point of view, we've we've had a lot of success, I think, in communities. Establishing thresholds, you know, for bigger projects versus small. And thinking through how they can get, you know, some of the smaller mom and pop projects through at a quicker pace. And so reserving the time to devote to bigger projects separately. And and thinking through which projects really need to have public hearings versus which don't. So I think, I think we've gone back and we've we've worked on multiple code updates several times. And we've we've always gotten feedback that the efficiency, the process is one in one area they've seen a lot of improvement.
Commissioner Smith?
We have a bunch of questions, but one thing, at the risk of, I don't mean this to be a criticism. Next time we see slides, I'd love it if the print was a little darker. They were really hard to read.
We, at the last minute, we had to switch over from the original version to a PDF that was sent over to a different computer. And we didn't have the right fonts installed on our computer, so apologies for that. It was hard for me to read as well.
I think the sort of the underlying question I have, and I have a bunch of questions that just about. Yes, you're going to look at density, I guess, and short term rentals. Will there be an opportunity or will you look at the role of the planning commission? Because I find the lack of clarity of what quasi judicial means to be brutally difficult to and compromising, quite frankly. I guess my first question is, are you looking at things such as if somebody brings a proposal with a certain amount of affordable housing in it, which I consider to be along with style and architecture. One of the major, if not the major issues in this city. That they will get a shorter review process, that there's an incentive other than payment in lieu of or money, there's an incentive for people to for developers and to develop property with higher than, whether it's thirty percent, twenty five percent, but a big number, shorter review, less money, quicker into the quicker into the process. Is that, is that something you're thinking about? And are things like that something you're thinking about?
Very much so. I think we have an opportunity to look at the whole basket of carrots and sticks in the new code update. And we have an opportunity to think about what your priorities are in terms of affordable housing or sustainability. And then to figure out how to encourage, get the code to encourage more of those things. And so it could be, it could be greater densities or it could be greater building height, or it could be faster processing time. Some communities have done expedited processing, so I think all of that can be on the table, definitely.
More more later.
Great, great comments.
Commissioner Faulkner?
So the different districts within the city have have different needs, have different availability for land, have different. Some have different code, like different codes around architecture and whatnot. One thing that I find problematic is that if you, for example, if you don't want like Airbnb's in the downtown area. Then we eliminated the possibility for that to be anywhere else in the city, really. And I find that we could possibly do the code in a way that that can be customized per district based on that district's needs and and that not all districts are the same. Is that something that you're looking at in the code review?
It will be, yes, Commissioner. I think, you know, Jenny showed you that example of a of a of a use table. And I think we'll have the opportunity to work with you all to be very methodical. And go through that table and look district by district at the uses that are allowed and say, you know, are these uses consistent with that district intent? And it doesn't have to be across the board for every district. It can be very tailored. So I think, you know, very much so. On those issues of ADUs and short term rentals and some of those, you know, tricky use types. I know there's, those will be, you know, very involved conversations. But we definitely have the opportunity to be more tailored and and not do a one size fits all approach.
Right, thank you. That's all right now, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Commissioner Miranda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is my second bite at the apple, I guess. Thank you.
Second, twice.
I, well, I would second Commissioner Faulkner's comment about regulating more to district. I think that's a really a great idea. I did have a question. In the presentation, you you talk about form based tools. Can you describe what that is?
Sure. There's a whole body of of planning and zoning practice that's evolved over the past twenty, thirty years called form based zoning. And the the original idea, architects came up with it and they said, let's focus on building form. You know, zoning is kind of typically focused on uses in the past. But architects said, hey, let's just get the building form right. Then we don't really care what goes on inside that building. We don't care about use. And so the idea, the whole body of form based zoning came up with this idea of just focusing on design. And how buildings relate to the street. And, you know, where do you put the parking? But focusing on that physical look, that idea took off. It was very, became very popular in a lot of communities. But practically speaking, most communities softened that approach. And they said, well, actually, we do care about use a little bit, sometimes a lot. And so we see more often hybrid approaches that integrate those form based tools, but often still have some more traditional use based approaches as well. We have, we have to be very careful when we talk about form based zoning. Because it means different things to different people. And there's a whole spectrum of approaches that people call form based zoning. And sometimes people mean different things on those spectrums. And so when we talk about it generally, it means a heightened focus on building design. A heightened focus on the the layout of the sidewalk, how the building is related to the street. It means a code that's more, got a lot of illustrations about dimensional standards, things like that. It's probably going to be more staff and staff intensive to develop and to administer. That it's 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 more expensive to develop those, and so communities are often targeted about where they adopt form based tools. And it's places where they want walkability, places where they want to create places like the plaza area out here. We've got that kind of walkable urbanism, you know, but there could be places maybe on Cereus that hopefully you want to see redeveloped with that kind of walkability in the future. And so those form based tools are a targeted approach to really encourage that kind of walkability moving forward. But it's a big idea, and as we move forward, there's a lot of education we have to do to make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
Yes, definitely. You know, the, I guess the other, it's not really a question, but it it didn't come up in the last meeting, so I thought I'd bring it up. There's a lot of talk of definition of terms and the example used was a primary facade, right? And although it, there are a whole set of terms that need definition. I do think, like particularly in the historic overlay. It it does come up, I think, that what Santa Fe is, what Santa Fe style is, is something inherently hard to define. I I I think that's why we have trouble. It, what we're trying to protect is something that is like abstract in a certain way. You can define it, you can give, I mean, giving pictures is great because that's like the big missing step. But what I wasn't, have you guys also looked at photographs beyond, I mean, particularly for historic?
Yes, we have looked at photographs. You know, some communities like to use those. Oftentimes you see photographs more in separate design guidelines, documents outside the code itself. You see them in supplemental tools like that. There are communities that use photos. They get dated quickly, so it's one more thing that the staff has to maintain over time. They can be tricky, you know, you want to make sure you're not getting photos of certain houses that were, you know, controversial in some project or something. So just the particular photos you select can be challenging. But, you know, it it it's a tool in the toolbox. And we can put them forward as as one way of illustrating the code and see if, see if it resonates with people. Y'all have a lot of great examples of historic defining characteristics that we could probably use to illustrate the code. I think the question's going to be, do you want to put those in chapter fourteen or maybe should they be somewhere else? But it's, we we definitely have used them before.
Photos are not normally something I would recommend for a code. But with Santa Fe, particularly in the historic district, it seems to make sense. I would even argue if a of a photo in the historic code became dated, that might be a good thing.
We we worked on the, yeah, we worked on the San Antonio historic district design guidelines and standards years ago. And those are, that that's a collection of design guidelines, books, manuals that are maintained outside the zoning code itself. But there's hundreds of photos in those documents, and that was a really helpful tool there. And it was all based on local examples of what was, what what's a good fence and what's not a good fence. So they can be really good. We definitely have experience with that. The question is just where do they go? And in San Antonio, they're they're not in the code itself. They were in supplemental documents, but they, yeah, they can be great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I was wondering if you could maybe speak a little bit more about what you see in terms of your process from here, specifically in terms of public involvement, public response. Coming back before this body, a review of any drafts. In addition to, I assume there will be a future public meetings. And there are the working groups, what you see in terms of what you expect, vague timelines, things like that.
Well, so I guess I'll jump to the end of this phase one. We're looking to have a full draft of a revised chapter fourteen, ready to go into the adoption process by the middle of twenty twenty four. So moving backwards from that, we're we're anticipating drafting that foundation's LDC and and probably two halves, two installments. Just so we don't throw everything at you at once. And for each of those installments, we're probably going to have a round of meetings where we come out and do presentations to the working committees, the working groups. And and then we'll work with the staff to identify what other groups we need to meet with on those on those trips, planning commission, et cetera. Then we'll have another round of meetings, once we get a consolidated draft ready that reflects feedback from all those groups. So I'm I'm guessing there's probably going to be three rounds of meetings at least, just on those milestone pieces. Now, independent of that, the working groups have said that they would like to meet on a on a monthly basis. And so they're probably going to have regular meetings. We'll 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 participate in some of those virtually. But that's going to be going on to get public feedback as well. So there'll be, I think, a lot of bites at the apple for the public to to weigh in. And and all that stuff is going to be online, so we'll put all those milestone documents online as well. This shouldn't be hard, this phase one. I I know I'm I'm, I don't want to be glib about it, but I we're designing this phase one piece so that it should proceed pretty smoothly. People are very comfortable with what we put in this phase one bucket, so we can establish some momentum. And we can go ahead and get a lot of the low hanging fruit. So we can establish some momentum, and we can go ahead and get a lot of the low-hanging fruit and the easy stuff out of the way, and people support it. So then we move into phase two. There's, there's just a lot of momentum behind really digging into those hard problems. Phase two is not specifically scoped yet. That's going to have a lot of public involvement. Those, those discussions about historic or what have you, that's probably going to be divided into more manageable chunks of different topics. And those will each have their own sets of meetings, but that's down the road.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I just wanted as much clarity as possible because I know it's so important to so many people to express what they think along the way. So thank you.
I have a question. And Matt, you said that the changes in, most of the changes in phase one are procedural, but that there are some substantive changes. And you said you talk about them, but I didn't really hear exactly what they are. Could you discuss sort of maybe what they are and why it's important to have them in phase one?
Sure, Commissioner. I mostly non-substantive. They're, they're going to go beyond the procedures in phase one. I mean, they might look at cleaning up all different parts of the code. So it could be the, the parking regulations, it could be definitions, it could be a lot of different parts. Generally, they're going to be non-substantive, though. They're not going to be changing the rules. They're just going to be clarifying the rules that you already have in place. Where we go beyond that is where we might have some substantive changes, and that, that's what I was referring to. And primary facade, maybe that's an example. You know, maybe the, the, this term substantive change is a little bit in the eye of the beholder. And so when we get into that conversation, we can suggest a definition for primary facade that we think clarifies the ambiguities there. We're going to have to decide then, based on feedback, is that a substantive change that people are not comfortable with, and they think that deserves more public outreach? Or is that something that people are comfortable folding into phase one? And it's kind of going to be case by case. And we're going to have to work with staff, work with you all, to really kind of continue to tread that line between substance and non-substance. But that's what I'm thinking about. It's in every, we, we've done a number of these projects that are kind of try to divide substantive versus non-substantive. Every one of them, the line's been gray, and it's kind of landed in different places on different topics. So it's just communication. You just have to be really open with everybody about what's being proposed. And, you know, if we can, we'll push it forward in phase one. But if it needs more conversation, we're going to hold it in a bin for, for later phases.
I understand. Thanks. Commissioner Faulkner?
So I have a couple of questions. As far as community outreach goes, are you working with organizations like Chainbreakers?
Chainbreakers, I think, was invited to be on the Community Advisory Citizens Advisory Working Group. I don't think we've heard back from them yet. I know that there, they've been mentioned several times. So I, I might defer to staff on kind of broadening the composition of that group. But I, I know that part of the conversation with that group yesterday was identifying some groups that weren't at the table yet, and they were one of them.
Yeah, Neighborhood Network is another one.
Neighborhood Network, yeah. Oh, I just wanted to jump in. Yeah, Chair Clow, Commissioner Faulkner. Yeah, I think what we saw today when we convened the technical working group and the, and last night, the Community Advisory Group, was that the, the technical group was, how many people came? Like, it was about twelve, twelve or fifteen, or maybe a little bit more than that. It seemed like we had a few people on Zoom. They're really engaged in phase one. There's, because there's a lot of cleanup that I think they're really poised to, you know, kind of address in phase one. And I think the, the substantive changes that are coming in phase two and three are really the, the kind of bread and butter of the community group. And so we're going to be looking to grow that group, you know, as we kind of move into phase two. So we have reached out to many groups, and we're hoping to, you know, continue to identify people who want to step up and, and be in like regular, of active members of the community engagement group as we address substantial changes to the code.
So this is something that I personally care a lot about. Some of these organizations are, are feel disenfranchised by the process. And so we may need to lean in a little more into getting them into the process so that they see that they're genuinely being asked to participate. And that's what I'd say about that. Is there, are we looking at long-range planning as something that's being incentivized in the code re in reviewing and assessing the code? I mean, it seems like we piecemeal projects, and there's not a long-range plan, which could cause problems around infrastructure and traffic and a lot of the hot-button issues related to development.
So for a private sector project that is large and scaled, are, are we incentivizing their kind of master planning upfront? So there's an overall strategy, an overall theme. That's a good comment. We definitely can look at that. There's, we definitely have worked in places that have established procedures for, they call it different things, an overall development plan or a master plan or something. But if you go to the hard work of getting that big concept approved upfront, then maybe subsequent decisions are easier to, to, to walk through if they're consistent with that initial master plan approval. So, yeah, we, we, we have developed procedures like that in other places that we can bring to the table.
Well, and my concern is that we have, we have major subdivisions being built, and they're responsible for infrastructures to some degree. And I don't see that they're working in lockstep with other major subdivisions that are being built in the area. And so you have kind of like this, you have like this jigsaw puzzle that isn't quite lining up when it comes to infrastructure and when it comes to like planning the trails and some other things. And so that's where long-range planning would be important to me, is that these major subdivisions that are being built, we need to have some kind of planning to kind of get them in lockstep over the build-out of all of that.
And, and one of the things that we often emphasize in code updates to get at that issue is, is, is access and connectivity and making sure that new big projects are woven effectively into the fabric that's already there. And the subdivisions take into account the other development that's already nearby. And so, yes, we often have sections called access and connectivity that require, you know, connection of stub streets or connection of the bike network or connection of the trail network. So, yeah, I, I think that's definitely something that we're looking at as part of new standards.
Yeah, wasn't there a project we just looked at where there was a space of trail that, and there was no sidewalk? Because neither developer was responsible to take care of that. Right? And so that's the part that I'm like, we're going to, I don't want to have spaces in development where there's just, there's, there's no inter-infra-structure for the community. The other question I have is related to overlays. Some of our overlays were put in place, and they're kind of antiquated. Is there something that you're looking at around the overlays?
Yes, Commissioner, and, and we didn't talk about all of them. You've got, you've got a dozen, I think, or more. But some of your overlays are, they are antiquated. They're designed for specific use types, I think, like shopping centers. And there's, there's different ways that you can allow those uses or deal with those impacts without having a whole, you know, separate overlay district. And so whenever we do a code update, we like to look very critically at that list of overlay districts and say, are they all necessary? Can any of those goals be accomplished in other more effective ways? So we're definitely looking at that. That's not saying we're going to get rid of historic overlays or archaeological. But for some of those very specific, you know, obsolete ones, yeah, they're on the table. Arts and crafts is another one. You've got other ways of getting at that.
Yeah, this is more a comment than a question. What I would offer is that the code to date has been reactionary and politicized. So if the city, if we run into a situation where there's enough political pressure to get the governing bodies, including the planning commission, to make a political decision that impacts the code. And I think that's, that's the part that I'm like, I think we need to pay more attention to, that the code has to reflect what needs to be done for the city and not necessarily politically driven. And I think the politically driven decision-making has made the code this huge gigantic mess that hardly anybody can understand. And so if we can look at kind of putting the code together in a way that it can't be as politically influenced as it is to date, that would, that would be awesome.
Great comment. I agree.
Commissioner Smith?
A, a question for the chair.
Yes.
In terms of comments by the fifteenth of November, and in terms of the weight, and I have another question or comment about that, of different comments, would it make sense for the planning commission to make their comments through the staff as opposed to on a public website?
Based on the fact that we're a quasi-judicial body, yes, I think it would be.
Whatever the hell that be.
Yeah. Well, what it means is
You're the lawyer.
That you can't talk to people about things. You know, that you, you have to be unbiased and basically come in with an open mind, which means you haven't been talked to or influenced by anybody. So you, you have to isolate.
So should, sure.
So I think, yes, it would be individual discussions with staff. And, and I mean, we have to, you know, I think it also plays into the open meeting issue. So if, you know, four of us make comments about the same thing or something, there could be, you know, a dis-
So, so I have
There could, it could be a violation of open meetings, but so I think it's best to, to go through staff, except for perhaps Jessica, who's on the, on the committee, on one of the committees, and also Shab. So they're each on one of, one of the, the technical and the sort of community.
So, so I have a follow-up question to that. I thought quasi-judicial and, and ex parte only applied to cases and not to policy discussions.
I would generally agree with that. I, this is generally more of a legislative action, this updating of a citywide zoning code. Before we get into the specifics of who involves what, we need to
I, yes, Commissioner Faulkner and Chair Clow. Legislative matters are different. You are generally sitting in a quasi-judicial capacity in cases which you are, you know, deciding on and not as much in legislative matters. But as Chair Clow said, there is still open meeting as act issues that you would want to avoid.
Commissioner Smith?
One, one more, just sort of a worry. One of the things I think we're learning is that when you have a public hearing, there are some people who come and what they have is their voice, and then they go home. They don't have deeper resources. They don't have the chance to do research. They don't have smart people advising them. Then you have others who are in the business. Doesn't make them bad people. But I would just hope that you would keep your ears open for the weight of information that is coming from those who have the power to influence and those whose voice is their only way to be heard. Because we're, I think we're hearing and learning in this country, you can get all the rules right, but still the predominance of power lies with a small minority of us. And I would include myself as one of us in this case. So I don't quite know how we do that. But I, I would just worry and hope that we, you keep your, your, your focus on not the preponderance of weight, but the diversity of opinion.
It's, it's an excellent comment. I, I think a lot of communities have struggled with that. I think there's always a need for public hearing. There's always a need for public comment on big, important projects. That doesn't mean, mean you need to have a public, you know, hearing on every project. And one of the ways communities have tried to recognize that power imbalance in public hearings sometimes is try to say, does everything need to go through a public hearing? Can't we be more specific upfront about the standards that we expect projects to comply with? And then have a more objective determination that doesn't require that kind of public hearing, you know, power imbalance. So it's not to say public hearings aren't necessary, but does everything need to go there? That's, that's, that's something communities are grappling with.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Are you giving any thought to skyline? I had an experience, and I'll leave the specifics out, the other day of driving into town and witnessing towers and large structures that are obstructing the view of the mountains that I could see two years ago. Now, that doesn't mean they shouldn't be there. And some cities have height restrictions and others, but have you, are you giving any thought in this to skyline? Because how we see the hills behind us and the hills of Los Alamos and Sandia have something to do with what we consider the beauty and the wonderful nature of this town for everyone who lives here.
Interesting comment. We, we have not heard a lot about that from the public, but we definitely have experience with, we call them view protection regulations sometimes, and communities have done them in different ways. You know, our city of Denver was the first in the country to have a, a mountain view protection ordinance. And it, it came up because they had these big multifamily towers that were impacting some of the views. And so they defined particular vantage points, like from public parks, and they created these view corridors that you couldn't build within. City of Austin has identified view corridors of the state capital, and you can't build within those view corridors. So there's definitely ways to do it. We can bring those ideas to the table. They can be pretty elaborate to define, you know, what views are important because you can't designate everything. But, you know, that's, that's a topic that we can raise. Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, we'll open it up for public comment. So if anyone from the public wants to make comments, please come forward. So you'll need to state your, you need be sworn in, and then you need, nope, no scoring in. You need to state your name and address.
Name and address or council district.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Dr. Andrew Neber. I own a business in Santa Fe, in the Richards Avenue Business Park, thirty-two sixteen Richards Lane. I want to make two points, but I want to first put them in the context of why I'm here. And that is that four years ago, I learned three facts about this state. One is we're the third poorest state in the nation. Two is that ninety-eight percent of the food we eat comes from outside the state. And three, one in five children goes home hungry every night. So I decided four years ago to start trying to make a difference, and I built a farm. As it happens, it's an indoor farm in the Richards Avenue Business Park. It presently feeds or produces four thousand heads of leafy greens every week year-round. And that food goes to schoolchildren, food banks, and senior centers. Urban agriculture is not just a trendy thing that we want to do. It's an essential need. Because in those four years, we've seen our suppliers of those ninety-eight percent dwindle because of natural disaster, climatic change, and so on. I happen to be an advocate for building farms in urban centers utilizing unused buildings. We can build very efficiently indoors. My farm is now the first and only indoor farm in New Mexico. And we've learned a lot. Now, why am I here? It took me twenty-two months to get a business license. Because the code says aquaponics farms, of which I have one, need special use. We went through special use requirements, and the Board of Adjusters approved us immediately, saying, why are you wasting our time? You shouldn't be needing to come before us because you're going to be growing food in an existing building. But I got the special use permit, and then I got a call from the city a few months later saying, oh, by the way, you know that you need a business permit and a building permit. And I said, well, now I thought I had the special use, and I thought that was enough. I thought all I had to do is pay my thirty-five dollars and get a business permit. But no, I had to then spend fifty thousand dollars on architects, lawyers, tradespeople to ensure that the building that I was leasing that was twenty years old met today's code, even though I was not constructing anything. I was putting tanks, fish, growing spaces within an indoor space, and it cost me that much money and nineteen months. I want to do this again and again and again. And so I applaud this revision, but I make two comments. In, because of my experience, number one is you need a third working group. And that working group needs to be industry professionals who are trying to run their businesses in the city because they understand the needs, the requirements, the feasibilities, the difficulties of creating and operating their businesses in this city. It was very clear to me through the whole process that the Land Use Office did not understand anything about what we were doing. I got questions or comments saying I had to be ADA compliant. Well, under federal and state law, greenhouses do not have to be ADA compliant on the inside of the space. I had a whole bunch of questions posed and I had um a whole bunch of questions posed and raised that in fact were irrelevant. Plus, I had to bring a building into compliance that had been changed and changed and changed by every tenant before me. But I was now responsible for. Correcting their mistakes, if you will. So having people who know the industry, whether it's film, whether it's urban agriculture, whether it's um retail, whether it's. You name it, whatever industries or businesses we want in town, you should have representatives on a working group who can talk. Intelligently to the um people adjusting the plans to make sure. That the codes are realistic and feasible and appropriate for the businesses that they're occupying, occupying. And the final issue comes to a point that Commissioner Ryland made about efficiency. The code is not the problem, although it'd be nice to have some pretty charts and make it easier to read. That isn't what caused eighteen months. What caused eighteen months is that you have one permanent electrical inspector. Right? And I waited nine months for him to come to my facility. What he did was look at the panel and say, did you put in any circuits? And I said, no, and he said, okay, approved. And then he wanted to talk to me for twenty minutes about how difficult it was to work in the land use office. So efficiency is not about the code. Efficiency is about staffing, educating, training. Funding the land use office so that they can implement the code. And work collaborative with folks like me to, to get it done. So I hope that within this process, you are giving thought to that part of the process as well as just revitalizing or renewing the code. Um but on top of all of that, please talk to people who understand the industries that you're trying to regulate. With that off. And my time, thank you. And I'm happy to be part of that process if someone wants to look out uh for my, for my insights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Peter Ives and I live at one forty West Zia Road. Uh in District Two. Um and I did not so much have necessarily comments as a number of questions. Although I do appreciate the Chair's effort to distinguish what is non-substantive from what is substantive because that. Does get to potentially redefining things in our code. And I'm hoping that as uh uh the consultant moves forward, they will juxtapose. Those things that they believe are substantive based upon their experience in doing these code rewrites all over the country. Uh with the, the old and the new and uh an explanation of why that is substantive. That would be, I think, very helpful for us looking at this and trying to participate in the process. Um I had a question, uh the city is a certified local government for historic preservation purposes. Um and that's a sort of state-created program and run through. Uh the uh historic preservation division, uh which is a part of the Department of Cultural Affairs. And involves the shippo, so my question is, be, is the shippo going to be engaged in? This process for purposes of looking at those types of issues. Uh because that uh there was a process to go through to get that certification in the first place. Um another question, I hope a copy of tonight's presentation might be made available also on the website. Good. Uh and then I was hoping the uh uh. Consultant could identify uh the five cities who most recently have used their services, updating their codes. Uh because I'm curious to see what those code changes were in different places. Uh and uh glad for the reference for San Antonio's historic district because that might be certainly a uh lesson. Uh uh. An example of uh the work that comes into play in historic districts of which we are uh blessed and fraught. Thank you.
Good evening. Shane Woolbright, twenty-three oh four Calle Corta, Santa Fe. Uh have three different organizations. I'll be very quick. The Audubon Society of uh New Mexico has concerns about lighting pollution. I'm hoping there will be strong lighting pollution restrictions within your code as you bring it out. Uh it'd be nice to be one of the few cities in the country that gives a damn about migration, bird, bird life. Uh secondly, as the chairman of and president of the Cerro del Sol Homeowners Association. We think the escarpment rules of the city have been ignored for some time. The city is going to be going west. Uh we hope that these escarpment rules and ridgeline construction standards will be looked at. Will eliminate uh the building on the escarpment and those ridge lines in order to keep the views uh that you think are important. In line, these seem to be ignored in the recent past. It doesn't seem to be staff that, you know, has a real good idea. How these rules might be implemented. Uh thirdly, climate change. Santa Fe issues about twenty percent more carbon now than it did ten years ago. City doesn't seem to be concerned about carbon. If you look at a home wise home, one of these nice supposedly low income homes. That home has ten times the electric pull of my house. I have four thousand square feet. It's eight hundred square foot of a home wise house will have eight, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen thousand watts pull. At any one time, which will assert, which will result in significant rate hikes for you. Uh in the future, as you're going to have to be paying thirty to forty thousand dollars worth of electric infrastructure per home. As compared to the five hundred dollars of electric infrastructure my house might have had nineteen seventy-four. It's also going to put stress on your electric grid and you're going to have to rebuild it. You'll be faced with things like Albuquerque has where subdivisions can't have electric cars because the subs, uh the infrastructure. Won't support them. It is your job. Most people just turn a blind eye to electricity and city governments say, it's the province of private enterprise. It's not. You have a responsibility to think about climate and the cost of the energy to those lower income people that pick up these lousy homes. So those are the three areas I hope you will look at, think about. I appreciate your time.
Good evening. Um my name is Will McDonald. Uh four eighty-eight Arroyo Tenorio in Santa Fe. Downside, downtown and east side historic district. I'm an architectural designer and I spend quite a bit of time at this podium talking to the historic board. Uh go through that process of getting approvals in the historic district. One of my concerns is. The. The code is a mess. The historic code is a mess and, and just. Rearranging it, certainly there's some housekeeping to be done, but it, it needs a bottom up uh overhaul and. And I'm concerned that the working groups that uh have been put together are. That this would just be one small part of what they do. I think there should be. Some sort of public discussion to work through the question. What the heck do we want the historic code to do? Because it's complicated. As you said, member Morondo, that it, your uh legislating. Style. And and I think it's valuable. I enjoy living in the historic district, but there needs to be a lot of work here. I've. Uh talked with Heather, I've sent emails to Jason, I've uh talked with Daniel uh about this. It's a difficult issue. There's going to be, it's going to be contentious. It need, the discussion needs to happen. So really. Jason and Heather, uh it, I think it falls to you to, to help make this happen. So that we can have a code that works, that the administrative burden of getting things approved here is reduced. At the same time that the goals that we can agree to can be met uh for the historic district. Thanks.
My name is Nate Downey. I live at eleven oh four Don Gasparr Avenue. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for having this meeting and staff for being here. I think the consultants are doing a great job so far. And I'm here for two reasons. I want to support uh Andrew Neighbors' uh farm comments. I too, I just got a building permit uh recently to uh install a, uh and build a greenhouse. And uh that was a nine and a half month process. It was delayed by one, one interesting question, which was, what is the color? Of your greenhouse? And I went with um wax paper. Uh and so it was um the challenge, but uh there was also a six-month process with an EN, two ENNs and. The neighbors showing up and the special use. I heard that that special use might be changed and uh I would really support. Uh special use permits uh uh for greenhouses over seven hundred and fifty square feet, which in all the twenty-six zones in our city. You can't build a greenhouse with have, without having an extra six-month process to go to uh the Board of Adjustment. And so if we could quickly get rid of that and allow greenhouses to be built. I think that our community would be uh well-served with, you know, products like this, which was actually grown at the Santa Fe Community College, which is segues nicely to my second point. Um there are, there's a great program there and a lot of the people who uh take those classes and, and get jobs in the field. Drive from Albuquerque, they drive from Pecos, they drive from um Espanola and Los Alamos and, and to, to come and to learn. And then to work for Andrew and then to soon work for me as well. And that's just, that's difficult for people. And we have to have a community that has more affordable housing, that has greater density so that we um can have people who can then. You know, make that sustainability that we need happen. So, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Morika Vorenberg Hensley and I live in the county. But I was born and raised here in Santa Fe and I live in the county with my family because I have not been able to. Afford to move into the city so far, um but I'm also the executive director of the Santa Fe Watershed Association. So I work in the, in the city and I first want to express my gratitude to the Planning Commission and to the consultants. And to the city for having this transparent process, updating chapter fourteen. Um and I want to underscore the importance of water in all land development. And I, I really hope, I, I have uh sent a few emails um but have not been responded to yet. But I really hope that there are diverse water professionals who are on, in these working groups. Um because we have an opportunity to be visionary. In our wet water management throughout the land development process. Um one example is parking and impervious surfaces. Um turf landscaping, I appreciated seeing those in the, in the assessment report, but. I want to underscore the fact that I, I think there could be a much more profound confluence with. The Santa Fe River Commission, the Santa Fe Water Conservation Committee and other amazing experts in the community. For the nexus between stormwater and outdoor irrigation. We need green stormwater infrastructure in our city. If we are going to have a resilient and water safe future, it's not an option. We need better stormwater infrastructure and the good thing is that that relates directly to outdoor water use. By going to any one of the demonstration rain gardens throughout our city. Other green stormwater infrastructure projects throughout our Arroyos and our river. It's clear that we can improve the soil health and moisture. And recharge our aquifers using our stormwater, which then feeds our city wells, which are a backup source. Of city municipal water use. Um and we can green our city with native species, reduce urban heat island effect. Um all of these things can work together. Um so I, I really hope that more emphasis can be. Uh highlighted in future revisions on not just mandating detention ponds and. And that and limiting that or calling it good with new developments, but saying. We actually can put in bio retention basins. We can, instead of just having parking lot trees. We can make each of those parking lot spaces a rain garden, a pocket rain garden that is positive habitat. That is irrigated completely with stormwater. Called, local colleagues have done amazing research on the benefits of this. So um if you want to reach out to me or if I can connect you with any of my colleagues who work on these issues. I think that this is a really, really essential part and I want to highlight that and I, I look forward to continuing to participate in this process. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Rash. I live in the county in El Dorado. But I was the city's historic preservation planner for fifteen years. Um and I came here to make two comments until I heard the proceedings of this meeting, so I took notes. And so I'm going to be, for the record, putting in my comments about things that might be rather scattered or not in any certain order. Um but I wanted to get some things into the minutes to make sure that my voice is heard. Um first of all, I thank you very much for hearing about this update and I'm really happy that staff has brought this to the Planning Commission. I would ask if it's going to other important committees since this body has no jurisdiction over historic districts or archaeological districts. And I would think that this presentation should be made to those overlay zoning districts. Uh because when I watched this presentation, it's very heavy in the underlying zoning. Um and the overlay zoning districts, the word overlay is the most important thing. Those districts have boundaries in the underlying zoning districts that are exceeded. And they must be looked at separately from underlying zoning because they overlay multiple underlying zoning districts. So I, I beg the, the uh Clarion consultants to talk to the overlay zoning districts. Uh responsible boards. I know you handle several of them, but you do not handle all of them. And they're so critical because they do transcend those underlying boundaries, that you can't treat them in the same way. Um I'm very interested in the technical and citizen advisory working groups. I know that you have approached groups for membership. Uh I'm not a member of group. I was your historic preservation planner for fifteen years, longer than any other planner in historic preservation. And so I have experience and knowledge that I could offer to this process, but I'm not part of a group that's been invited to attend. So I don't know how to get involved with these two groups and I could be of use in both. The technical working group and the citizen advisory group because of my extensive experience with historic preservation and archaeology. I administered those two codes for fifteen years with the city of Santa Fe. So I'd ask about why you're not looking at individual citizens for membership on these groups. Phase one versus phase two and three is very interesting. Uh you've brought up several topics for phase one that I do not think are part of phase one. And what is substantive and what is not substantive. Historic signs cannot be looked at with the sign ordinance. Again, because they transcend uh the overlay zoning district and historic preservation. So they can't be separately addressed without looking at the building standards since the signs go on the buildings. They have to harmonize with the buildings. Um similarly, uh demolition of historic structures. That's a very critical aspect of the historic district's overlay zoning ordinance and I don't think it should be part of phase one. Because it is essential. Um when I worked for the city for fifteen years, I was trained very greatly by the land use director and the city attorney. And even though I'm very sad about it, um the land development code is city ordinance. It is the law that the city bodies administer, staff and people like you. The shippo is the state which administers the federal law. Those two do not work together, even though I tried over and over again to get support by the shippo in our regulations. And I was told over and over again by the city attorney, the H Board and the Archaeo Board only administer their own laws. They do not to talk about shippo laws at all and the shippo does not talk about city laws at all. I'm very sad about that fact, but it seems to be very true. For fifteen years, that was beaten into my head. That city is not the same as shippo and they do not work together. It's sad, but true. So I don't think the shippo will be involved in this process since they're totally separate. Laws that are totally separately administered by staff and boards. Uh, getting to more of the notes that I heard. Um, to possibly give faster review to denser development and greater height is antithetical to historic preservation. If you go lower, you should go faster through historic preservation. If you go less dense, you should go faster through historic preservation, not quicker. See how different the overlay zoning code is compared to the underlying zoning. Um, I heard a lot about form-based tools, uh, versus uses, and that got me thinking that I guess I'm not understanding it correctly. To me, I thought the whole review of this code would be versus prescriptive and performance zoning. That is critical and I don't think we're going to be addressing it. Cause when I heard form-based tools versus use, you can't do, um, prescriptive zoning and performance zoning together. It's, they, they don't work together. And I was hoping after the fifteen years of working with the city that we were going to get away from prescriptive zoning and into performance zoning. That is the critical twenty-first century land use code. And I don't know if we're getting it to it with the, uh, form-based tools that will be proposed. Um, standards which may be outside of the zoning code, that frightens me greatly because the zoning code is the law, just like, um, resolutions do not have the teeth of law. If you put the historic code as outside of the land development code, it may not have the teeth of law, which would be seriously very bad for the historic district in Santa Fe. So I do not recommend putting the standards outside of the land development code, which is the legal limits of what you can do in the historic district. Um, primary facade is essential to the historic district and it cannot be part of phase one. It is the basis of everything about historic preservation with a historic structure. Um, and it, it gets to another point I heard about the escarpment overlay. That's another one of those overlays, Archeo historic escarpment, which are critically different than, um, arts and crafts, highway corridor, those are underlying zoning issues in my opinion. But these other issues are way too big to be considered with the underlying zoning. And when you look at the escarpment overlay, it is about the view shed and historic preservation is about the view shed and even primary elevations are about the view shed. It's something that has to transcend underlying zoning boundaries. It is an overlay. Um, in twenty eighteen, uh, there, the historic district's ordinance was rewritten by, uh, the land use director, the city attorney, the manager of the current planning division and the manager of the historic preservation division, myself. I haven't heard yet if they've gotten this report for review. Um, it did tie up a lot of those so-called phase one loose ends of organization. It also provided administrative gloss where the code did not have essential information. So I still haven't heard if the city has gotten that rewrite from twenty eighteen that I worked on and is using it in their assessment of the land use code. Um, and finally, I think the most important thing for me is talking about the overlay districts that this planning commission has no authority over should not be discussed here, such as even bringing up primary elevation. That needs to be brought up in front of the H board. Thank you.
Anyone else here from the public that wants to comment? If not, is there anyone on Zoom?
Yeah, thank you Chair Clow. Um, I just want to ask if anyone is on the Zoom meeting, um, and would like to comment, uh, tonight. Please raise your hand, um, and I will allow you to speak. Thank you. Okay, it does not look like anybody's raised their hand on Zoom, Chair Clow.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'll go ahead and close the public, um, comment. And we'll go to more questions and comments. I first, um, have something that I thought of. Um, and that is the, in reading the report, um, on the highway corridor, it was pretty short and said that maybe looked like, there was a question in terms of whether it was really necessary. I would just point out that two of the highway corridors, right, have issues with, um, the view corridor contained in those are view corridor issues. So I think those need to be looked at because in two different cases that came before us, those were significant issues. In terms of how the development might be affecting the view corridor. So I think those are important and, and, um, and I really liked, um, the statements that you made about what Denver did in, in terms of defining different view corridors. I think it's, um, it, it, it sounds like it's a little bit different. It's sort of the view that's going to be preserved and then where it's going to be preserved as opposed to maybe just a whole section of the highway where there's a view on the highway. So it sounds like a, a good thing to look at. And I do think that, I, I think in your report, you said there wasn't a lot of comments from individuals about view corridors. But from my experience on the planning commission, it is really important to the, um, to people in Santa Fe. View corridors are really, really important. Um, I'd also like to comment that I thought your report was excellent. The, it's really easy to read. Um, it's very, very clear, very succinct. And I really like, um, at the end where you summarize all the different points, um, it, so it flows very nicely. So I really appreciate that. It was, uh, and I think it's, it reads, um, I don't think you have to have a lot of technical experience to be able to understand what's being said in it. So it's an, an easy layperson's read. Um, Commissioner Smith.
This is certainly falls outside of the planning commission's purview, but I'm just wondering whether you are thinking as a consultant or the, or the land use staff. My questioning as to how we got the organization of resources in city government the way they are organized. Went back to one version, which was that fifteen or twenty years ago, there was some kind of a dispute politically amongst people around the role of the planning commission and other groups that have to do with affiliated or aligned functions and they were broken up. I'm just wondering, I, I wasn't here at that point, unfortunately, too bad for me. But, um, whether or not you feel it's within your scope to look at whether or not as you get to two and get to stage two, making recommendations to whoever the appropriate body is about the best way to organize because resource scarcity is a problem I hear throughout. And I don't know if there's a relationship between that and how things were reorganized fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years ago, quote unquote, or not. But is that something that might fall within your purview?
It might, it might, Commissioner. Um, without getting into the historical evolution of who does what, I think, you know, one of the things that you've asked us to look at is, is the system efficient? And part of that is who decides what today and what are your abilities under state law to, to, to assign different decisions to different bodies and how do other communities, you know, handle those questions? And what are examples of other communities that might bring more efficient approaches? So I think we can certainly put some of those topics on the table. Um, those obviously can be, you know, uh, you know, hard conversations, but, um, we can certainly put ideas out there for discussion and, uh, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Faulkner.
I just have to act, echo Commissioner Smith's comments. I do organizational development as part of my consulting. And one of the things that I see in the city, the way the city's organized is, uh, I don't think land use is where it needs to be in the organization. I think it needs to be independent and have some autonomy um, outside of where it's placed right now. I also think that there's a lot of commissions and boards that make the system cumbersome for everyone from the small developer, mom and pop kind of selling their land and wanting to divide their property into nine different, uh, spaces. And then the big developers and having to go through so many hoops, through so many commissions and boards. I, from what I understand, a lot of these things were in one house and it was the planning commission and land use. And having to go through so many commissions and boards is cumbersome for everyone. And so that is something like organizationally, it would be, it would be awesome if you guys could address, to look at that. Is land use in the right place in the organization as a city? I don't believe it is. Um, and then all these boards and commissions that everyone has to run through, would it not be better to streamline those? I don't know if it will or won't. Um, but it's, it's just a suggestion to look at streamlining the process.
Understood. And I, I guess I would clarify my earlier comment. I, I think it's within our purview to focus on who does what within chapter fourteen and who makes the decisions about the land development code. Uh, obviously broader organizational questions in the city structure are, are outside of our scope. Um, but, uh, you know, we're going to keep our focus within chapter fourteen, but we, that, that being said, we have a lot of opportunities to be creative.
Any other questions, comments? Matt, did you have any wrap-up from what you've heard?
No, appreciate the, the, the feedback from the public, very thoughtful comments. I think we took a lot of notes and I think we have, um, we look forward to the discussion that, that comes through the, the comments and the documents. Um, it's, it's going to be a challenging process. We, we like these projects because they are challenging, but there's a lot of very thoughtful people in Santa Fe, um, as we've heard over the last couple of days and we're looking forward to hearing more from them. Um, we just really appreciate your time and the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Any matters from the commission? Uh, Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes. So the solve policy subcommittee met with stakeholders in relationship to the E N M process and the potential for mediation to be plugged in into high conflict cases. Uh, we met with, um, practitioners and the affordable housing folks, the community stakeholders, there, there seemed to be some problem with them accessing some of the materials. So we're holding another, uh, meeting with them and we're scheduling that right now. But after we get feedback from the stakeholders, I think we're going to, as a committee, we're going to review what the stakeholder feedback was and then see if we need to do another round of meetings with those stakeholders or look for additional stakeholders or do we have enough information that we can move on with a recommendation to the planning, to the planning commission?
Thank you. Sounds like you're making progress. Any other matters from the commission? If not, um, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.